All right, Mr. Chair.
It is eight o'clock. I'm the convene our pre-agenda meeting for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners for April the 20th. Let's see. We have the, at 8:30, the Wayne County Board of Equalization and Review Meeting. And then you need to just wait for that, or?
No, we just wait 8:35. I can hear a brief.
Okay, all right. And then we will adjourn the Board of Equalization and Review, and I will call the meeting to order. Invocations, Ms. Barbara Acock, Commissioner Barbara Acock. Pledge is Commissioner Bevan Foster. And Ms. Honeycutt, will you take it from here?
Yes.
Approval of minutes now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And Mr. Gurley will be here. He had to take his kids to school, but he'll be here.
Then we'll have approval of minutes from April 6th. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have two additions we would like to add. Number one, we would like to put first under Special Presentation. I hope everybody has seen the email that we sent out with respect to the emergency medical dispatch being implemented. We actually had our first delivery of a baby following the protocols through the 911, and we wanted to recognize that employee here, but also really promote the good work that our 911 is doing with the emergency medical dispatch. So they will be here. If we could, put that at number one under Special Presentations.
Why you wrong there, just for y'all's information? This particular call taker, previous to this, just about all of the bad calls that had come in fell on her phone for some reason or another. She was the call taker on the incident at the river and when it died at Mount Olive. And this was kind of a buildup for her to finally get one that she could make a difference in.
And she'll, she's working this morning. I think she's getting off at 7:00, but that's the reason why we're going to put her right at 9:00, if that's good with the board. And then the second thing we have is a 2021 Girl Scout Gold Award Recipients Proclamation. Carol, was, anybody going to read that, or we just need to put that under consent?
If you wouldn't mind reading it.
I will read it.
Because they're going to be listening. They're not attending, but they will be listening.
And if we're, you're okay with that, we'll put that right after the presentation by Ms. Will with respect to the resolution for Marty. So, but after the recognition of 911 employee under Special Presentation, we'll have Sheriff Pierce, Michelle Bass, and Stephanie Brown on the Wayne County Detention Center Substance Misuse Program discussing the grant that the sheriff has recently received. Number two, we'll have a presentation of our employee service pins. There is a lot. We haven't done this in about a year, so we're trying to do some catch-up today. So we wanted, but we wanted to recognize our employees.
And just so you'll know that we're not going to have them stand up there for a picture. We're, there's way too many. So Ray is going to help me shuffle them in, maybe five to 10 at a time, and just have them exit back out because of the ongoing pandemic, so.
Then motion to approve Recognition Day for National Service Proclamation. Is there anybody reading that?
Delbra McIntyre.
Delbra, okay.
It's Delbra, D-E-L-B-R-A.
And then we'll have a presentation by Ms. Emily Will on Marty Cheddar and a motion to approve resolution for Marty Cheddar Day Proclamation. And I hope everybody saw the email. Marty was a really valuable employee and well-loved employee within our library system in the history department and recently passed away. So we wanted to do something small to recognize and honor Marty at this time.
He was, he was a great guy. He knew more about, not being from Wayne County, he knew more about Wayne County than the ones over just lived here out of our life.
And then we have unfinished business. Discussion of Register of Deeds Office salaries at the request of Commissioner Antonia Williams.
Mr. Chairman, what discussion would that involve?
We did the, we looked at the pay with respect to surrounding counties for the register of deeds staff and did kind of a very quick pay look to see, you know, where they need, if there was needed to be adjustments or not.
Is this, is this not a budget process? I mean, we're working on the budget now. Is this, is this not something we need to be working on at budget time instead of now?
We were going to look at adding that as part of the budget process and because we're looking at making some salary adjustments within, you know, some certain departments. But that was one we were going to look at as well.
Yeah, initially, we saw some inequities in that department pertaining to the salaries. And we wanted to see where we stood compared to comparable counties. And our county manager, Mr. Honeycutt, he reviewed other counties and basically they, you know, we found out that we are under the amount of $2,000 or so dollars compared to other counties. So I think that it's definitely something budget time that we look at and see if we can, you know, clear that up.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with Mr. Williams, I'd like to have this moved from the agenda, and we discuss it at budget time. I think Mr. Honeycutt did send us all the information about where we stood with the salaries. And Mr. Williams, is that all? Fine with you?
I think that I'd like to see what the other commissioners might say before I approve that.
I agree with, with the vice chair that, I just think this is a, I don't, we need to discuss it when we get to budget. I, I agree. I don't want to open up Pandora's Box here. We have a budget process for things like this, and I'd appreciate if we would just hold off and bring that up when the county manager establishes those work sessions, when the county manager and the chairman establish those work sessions that all of us are going to be involved with, and we can make comments at that time. I don't know what we're going to accomplish of any discussions at this point until we get to the budget process.
Well, I think overall with the small staff that this department has, I think that it is something that, you know, we shouldn't say, okay, we're going to wait later down the line. I think it's something that we should, you know, start the process so that, you know, everybody's abreast of what the needs are for that particular department. We see that there are individuals that have left that department thus far and going to other departments. And, you know, what I've learned is they're going because there's additional funds they can get from other departments. So we don't want this department to be hurting because people say, hey, I can make a thousand hours more over here. You know, so I don't, I don't, I don't want it to become a dire situation where we have the register of deeds that's vital to the county, and we don't have any employees there. So I don't think we should wait to discuss this later.
Well, you know, you, you brought up something that they're leaving for more money. They're not leaving for more money, they're leaving for less money. I mean, that's a fact.
Yeah.
And also, there's people put in applications for jobs at the register of deeds office, and they've been approved, and they've been sitting on the desk for four weeks, and nobody's done anything about it. I mean, there's people out there that she can hire, but.
So, gentlemen, I don't want to turn this into a register of deeds discussion here and now. My main point is that I think Ms. Honeycutt did give us the amount of monies from the surrounding counties. We know what that is. The budget process is going on now. I think she's, the register of deeds office is scheduled in next week, so it's not going to be sitting around. And so just as table this, because we see what's happening now until the budget discussion within the next few weeks.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's fair that, I don't think it's fair with all due respect that we suggest that other people are leaving based, based on the fact that they just don't want to be there. I don't think that's fair to say that some are leaving for less money. I don't know that to be true. I don't know that to be true. How, how would any of these other commissioners know?
And if that was one reason why, I'd just say let's table this discussion and till the budget process when we're all in one room together.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion. Can we, can we? We vote on a motion now? Do what now?
You have to wait till we get into the deliberation.
Well, it's on the agenda, and we want to remove it from the agenda.
You have to do that during the process. This is the pre-agenda.
Okay.
But, gentlemen, one word of caution here. During the discussion when this comes back up, that's all our comments about the register of deeds office and just stick to this particular, particular item.
Well, it depends on how, you know, how it feels. I mean, I don't think anyone could tell me, well, how to express myself.
Oh, no, 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 sir. I'm not saying, saying that, but the comments about people leaving and so on and so forth, I just want to make this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that to be true.
Well, I don't, I don't know either. So that's why I don't want this to become a discussion in the open session about what's going on in that particular office. You know, so either negative or positive. This is just an agenda item. Either yeah, no, the agenda item, and move forward, and then have the discussions during our budget process in the upcoming weeks. If that's okay with everybody.
And.
I'm good with.
And then next, under unfinished business, is discussion of comprehensive plan for preventing ongoing flooding throughout Wayne County at the request of Commissioner Bevan Foster.
Just throughout the county, we've been, it's been getting flooded for years. We all know that, city, county, other cities. And from Smithfield all the way down to, I guess, New Bern, it's been a lot of flooding issues. And I don't know what we've done to this point as far as prevention. Years ago, people don't know Los Angeles used to flood. They brought in engineers to come and look at it and see what they could do to stop the flood. It hasn't flooded since those engineers came in with their plan, and they did what they're supposed to do. I just think it's a lot of things that we might could change around here. You know, we have roads that flood. I mean, if you live in Dudley, you almost trapped at times during flooding. And I don't see any different roads being built, no roads being built up, anything changing over the past 20 years, you know? And we've been getting flooded, I don't know if it's been quite, about 20 years? First flood, made the flood?
Floyd would be first.
It's about 97?
Brad.
Okay, 97, 98?
Yeah.
96? Okay, well, over 20 years.
I can remember when it flooded in 1954.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't hear the answer. So, I, I mean, I just want to see what we can do as far as, I mean, you know, I know everything costs money, and I know it would cost money to bring specialists down here to have a look at this county and ride around and just see. Because we're going to lose homes, we're going to lose businesses. And when we lose businesses, we lose job, we lose jobs. And then people are going to turn around and leave this county. We, we are not really growing as a county that much per year anyway as it is. So with more flooding, more issues, jobs lost, we're going to have even more of a problem. And like I said, I know it's going to cost money, but I think that we should look at, you know, how much it would cost to bring engineers in or to bring someone in that's a specialist at this. I'm not, I don't know. It was something that I brought to the city council years ago, even with putting in retention ponds and stuff in certain areas and trying to control some of that water to save some houses, save some homes. And, you know, this is just not a Wayne County problem, it's a state problem, you know? And it's something that we should be getting money from the state for also to come down here to, for, for this problem. And I, I mean, I just really want to take a serious look at it. I know we've gotten millions of dollars to Wayne County from past floods and stuff, but like I said, you know, the same roads still flood, the same housing areas, everything. We haven't really, I haven't seen a lot as far as prevention. You know, you know, we help with repairing houses and different things, but we're not doing a whole lot with prevention. And I think that we could do more and, and even come at our state to do more. Because if, I don't know how true it is, but they say, you know, water's flowing from Raleigh because of all the construction and stuff going on in Raleigh, and it gets worse down here when they release the dam and all of that. But that's, that's a problem. And the state need to work on that also. So I just think it's something that we need to look at and just see how much it would cost to bring in some specialists, engineers, or whoever it may be, to look and see if there's anything that we can do, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I definitely agree. We have a lot of flooding issues. We look at Mount Olive, then despair when it comes to flooding. I like to, you know, we, we know we are going to be allocated some funding from the American Rescue Plan. And I don't know when we're planning on receiving that. The county, county manager may answer that for us. And I think those, you know, we could try to set some money aside to see if that money could be used for engineering to help to see where we have the most needs.
And just to let, we, we don't have really clear guidance right now what it can and can't be used upon. I think they're still working on that. But again, we're getting 24 point.
23.9.
23.9 million that'll come directly to the county. But, but again, I'm not sure if that type of project would be a usable expense, so, but they're working on the guidelines now, and as soon as we know those guidelines, we'll make sure to share that with the board as well.
From what I've read, it can be used for infrastructure. Engineering would be part of infrastructure.
Right.
So, you know, but, you know, again, you know, we want to know to the letter how we can use the funds.
And so, because this is, this is something that needs to be discussed during budget time for, you know, engineering cost or whatever. I would like to bring that back during budget time.
Yes, sir. And then we have Appointment Committee.
There will be, there will be two appointments.
Those two were presented at the last meeting, correct?
Okay. And then we have Consent Agenda and our all-famous Budget Amendments, and I'll turn that over to Allison.
So you had on each of your desks a packet of three additional memos, and I did put the numbers that they correspond to with the budget amendments. These are replacement memos. During the agenda review, it was requested that additional information be given on these budget amendments, and we did not receive them in time to put them in the agenda. So that's what these three additional memos are for. So I'm going to start with page 22, number 372 of your budget amendments. For services on aging, they are requesting to increase the senior health insurance program by $5,210. These are additional funds received for the SHIP program, which is the senior health insurance, information insurance program.
This is just passed, or?
Yes, sir. And it does not require, this one does not require match from the county. For the library, they've received a donation in the amount of $200, and they are appropriating that for the Eco Explore program funding. And this donation was specified for that program. For the health department, which is one of the ones you have a replacement memo for, they're requesting to reallocate $20,000 from professional services to professional services medical. These are not additional funds, but it's a reallocation of existing funds and relates to the COVID-19 contract with Dr. Stackhouse. This will add additional hours and funds to enable him to continue working at the vaccine Your next budget amendment also has a replacement memo, number 379, for the health department. They are requesting to appropriate $30,000 in additional funds. These funds were received from the Kresge Foundation as a grant, and this will, this will be used for promotion of maternal family telehealth services and student remote learning. And I think these are specifically areas that were hard hit by the COVID-19 pandemic. Your next budget amendment is for the staff attorney's office. And you have another one after that, numbers 380 and 381. Both of these are due to additional collections in these line items, and there are additional expenditures associated with those collections. So they are increasing the revenue and increasing the expenditure as well. And that's numbers 380 and 381 in your budget amendments. So I'm going to move on to page 34. And this budget amendment is the last one you have an additional memo for, for facilities in the amount of $40,000. They are requesting to reallocate $40,000 from repairs and maintenance equipment to the fuel oil line item. This actually is their natural gas line item or LP gas. This is not additional funds, it's a reallocation. The price of gas has increased since January, and they are exceeding the projected usage in that line item. And we're going to work on a better description for that account line item as well, so that it's a little more clear what it's for. You have a budget amendment for the register of deeds to appropriate the over collection of excise tax revenue and to obligate payments to the state. So their fee, their revenues have exceeded what was originally budgeted, and there is a portion of that is owed to the state. So that is what we are appropriating, is the amount that's owed to the state. Your last budget amendment is for the health department. They are requesting to appropriate additional allocations awarded through this COVID-19 enhancing detection activities, the total being $986,167. And it's my understanding from them, from their budget meeting yesterday, that a portion of this will roll over to next year, so we will reappropriate what's not used.
How is this a grant also?
Yes, it is. And I think it, I think most of their grants come from the Department of Public Health. I'm not sure if it originated from the federal government or if this is truly state funds, but it usually gets passed through the state.
Dr. Will should be commended on the grants that she gets for the amounts that she's gotten because.
Yes, they have received a tremendous amount. And that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Allison.
One more question. With the register of deeds, you said fees due to the state.
Yes.
So how often do we pay fees to the state?
How often do we pay the fees to the state? They're paid monthly. There's specific reports that once we finish up a month, they're due by a certain date they have to turn in to the state.
So the register of deeds made that much more money in the past month that?
No, it would not be for the past month. My, my guess is that they're probably projecting for the rest of the year, and they see that that revenue is going to exceed it by at least that much, so that's why they're appropriating it that way. It should be for the rest of the year.
So no other questions on budget amendments, we'll go to number two. Motion to establish a public hearing on May 4th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in the commissioner's meeting room on the fourth floor of the Wayne County Courthouse Annex to receive public comments regarding proposed economic development incentive grant to AP admissions technologies and automotive exhaust manufacturer. This is the public notice that you saw that was released from the governor's office even before we had an opportunity to set the public hearing and discuss it. This is for 96 jobs for AP exhaust at $400,000 investment. What we would be looking at as our incentive is splitting $42,000 between the city and the county over the next four years for our one NC match for, for their allocation. So we'd set the public hearing for the next meeting. But again, I, when you got notification, we got notification. The governor sometimes gets out in front of the locals as far as wanting to make an announcement before we can. So we're dependent sometimes upon his, his releasing of information. Then number three, motion to approve the follow, following roads subject subdivisions to the state's maintenance system. And again, this is to put the following streets into the state's system. Dean Street, Fairmax Road, Hadley Drive, Glasgow Lane, and Sheffield Street, which are in the Hadley subdivision, Acres subdivision. And again, that's just a, really a rubber stamp. Motion, number four, motion to approve Spring Forest subdivision, Phase 3 final plat as recommended by the Wayne County Plane Board, and I'll turn that over to Barry.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, this is a final plat. So this plat, all the construction is done. A preliminary was submitted in the past for this, so they are in the process now of wanting to record the lots so that they can start selling them. This has 30 lots. It is off of Dollar Town Road, about three-fourths of a mile from Lake Wakina Road. The average lot size is around 17,390. Our minimum requirement's 15,000, so they do meet that. As I mentioned, all improvements are complete, the roads are constructed, hydrants are in, lighting is up. We do have a built-in standards letter from DOT stating that the roads do meet DOT minimum standards, construction standards, and the planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you would, if you would, address the fact of some solutions to the drainage that has been accomplished with this addition.
Right. In Phase 1, which was constructed, I believe in 2017, there is a, there were some drainage issues where water was backing up in between homes. And so what has happened is just the developer, this is actually a new developer, he did not develop for the first phase, but he's come in to develop these new phases. So he is actually, we requested that he go in and make those fixes to the drainage issues based on our stormwater requirements in Phase 1. And so he has actually gone in and done that. He's actually constructed a right lengthy ditch, probably it's well over a thousand-foot long ditch along Dollar Town Road to carry that water out that's backing up between those homes, and is doing other work out there to improve that drainage, not just in this phase they're recording, but also the adjoining phases that are impacted as well. So it should help pull that water out quicker. Now, I'm not saying there won't be water in some of those ditches, and it may be high water because they're designed to carry water, but at least there's an outlet now where that water will now flow out. Hopefully, it should be in a timely manner. So, so they have worked probably the past, well, since Christmas, they've been working on this, trying to get this resolved, so.
And the purpose for my asking you to bring that up, it kind of carries along with Commissioner Foster's comments on drainage and flooding and so forth. The issue in, in Wayne County is through the development of subdivisions over the years. We all know we live in Flatlanders country.
Right.
And as such, you must have drainage ditches in order to drain the properties.
Right.
The difficulty is, we didn't establish, and I'm not so sure we've established anything at this point, on maintenance of those ditches. Homeowners associations should be established to maintain the drainage ditches.
Right.
To go further. Over the years, as sandy as a lot of our subdivisions are, they Over the years, as sandy as a lot of our, uh, subdivisions are, they fill in the ditch and so therefore there is nowhere for the water to go and so you have flooding. And I think it's something, as we get into the, some of the discussions of Commissioner Foster's, uh, that we talk about possibly putting in some requirements on future developments, that they do have some mechanism to in fact maintain those drainage ditches.
Right. And, and actually we do.
We do.
With our ordinance, um.
That's so good to hear.
Yeah, we do with stormwater. Uh, we do require maintenance agreements. And if there are common stormwater features like a pond, um, you know, they do have to have a homeowners association set up to maintain those perpetually. And so, and you know, and even with streets, you know, if a street is taken over by DOT, the actual street, then those streets along that right of way then become the responsibility of DOT versus the actual homeowners. So the subdivisions you just saw earlier, those streets that were just listed being taken over by DOT, that's a good thing because now if there are any drainage issues along those streets or a pipe that runs over that, under that road, DOT could then go in and clean that out.
Right.
But until that point, if there are stormwater features, stormwater ponds, um, common areas like that, uh, then a homeowners association would be. So there are, there are agreements in place too with the, um, developer also for maintenance as well. So that we can go back and have that done.
Thank you for the information.
Good. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
It is 8:30. We need to. Go into our. My new Allen gave it to me. There it is. We need to go into our Board of Equalization Review, uh, April 20th, 21.
Recess, thank you, that's the word on the floor. The Board of Commissioner's meeting and reconvene the Board of Equalization Review meeting.
Okay. I don't need a motion to do that though. Right, the Board of Commissioners' meeting is where, uh.
Recess.
We'll recess the Board of Commissioners' meeting and we're going, uh, reconvene the Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Lampkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. If you recall, two weeks ago, we opened our Board of Equalization Review and, uh, this has been the two-week period we wait and we're adjourning it today. Basically, what that means is we'll be, um, accepting no more real property appeals for this tax year. That can come back next January, but this cuts it off for this year. Uh, we still have the same four I reported last time. We have worked three of those four. We, we'll be working the fourth one, uh, probably this week or next week. We'll send replies out. If anybody wants to, wishes to be heard at a later date, they'll be heard by you as the Board of Commissioners. And that's pretty much what we have.
Any questions for Mr. Lampkin? If none, I adjourned. Before you did that, ask if, does anybody here who's got an appeal? Does anyone here have any comments on this? Any appeal? Appeal.
Thank you, sir.
If none, we adjourned. We adjourned the Board of Equalization and Review at this time. Thank you, Mr. Lampkin.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to reconvene the Board of, I mean, we're going, yes, reconvene the Board of Commissioners' meeting and Mr. Tadic, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next on the consent agenda is, uh, the surplus of property. Let me get to the right page here, I'm sorry. Uh, there we go. Motion to declare technology equipment located 208 Mallory, Mallway Street, Goldsboro as surplus property and approve the sale, uh, approve the sale to Pride in North Carolina Mental Health Services. As the board is aware, this used to be the location of our WCDAs offices. Since we've done some, uh, our lease ends at the end of the month. And one of the things, we had some equipment there with door swipes and also, uh, cameras. And if we remove those, there would be some damage that would have been caused. Uh, we've worked it out so that the new tenant coming in could use those as well. We don't have to go back and make those repairs and we'll be able to get $1,000 by surplusing this electronic equipment. Any questions?
Did we have any, Mr. Chairman? Uh, do we have any estimate on value of that equipment that we are?
I don't know. I, number one, I don't know if, if we need it, but number two, I think it's older as well. So, so it was just, you know, that along with the repairs that would have to be made to the doors and to the, uh, taking the cameras down, we felt like this was a, a good compromise.
Did we have to provide the telephone system in that, that, uh, those offices? And is that included in this?
We, well, we're, we're taking that out. The telephone, you know, the telephones and, and what we put in as far as that, we have transferred over to, uh, the Jeffrey Street.
Right, right, so.
This is just really the physical, uh, that we have.
It's really just sensors and, and, and cameras.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And then under new business, uh, motion to approve juvenile crime prevention council, JCPC funding plan. And Dustin will be here at that time to go over it. Number two, discussion of a re-entry council in Wayne County to work with individuals released from incarceration in Wayne County at the request of Commissioner Bevan Foster.
Yes, uh, throughout the state, I think it's about 16, 17 counties that are already doing this. Um, Wake, Raleigh, I meant Wake, Durham, Eklundberg, Wilson, a lot of our bigger counties, um, are doing it. Forsyth, um, and basically it's, it's, it's a council to help individuals released from, uh, prison. Some, just with different things. Some have health issues, some have mental health issues, some need education, uh, housing, transportation. And it's just a board to, um, help getting some of those things together to help those individuals. It's, it's already a few people in the community doing this. Uh, I forget the company's name, but, um, Pastor A, he's, he's one of the men that's, that's doing it. And another man, Mr. Mike Gardner, Mike's coming in today at nine. They're already doing it, but to establish a board would help also bring funds to Wayne County. So you can, we could apply for grants with that board that would also help individuals getting out. And, and, and decrease, help with that, uh, recidivism rate. So, uh, I think, um, the sheriff, Sheriff Pierce had worked, had been, we spoke with Pastor A before and speaks a few, a while ago about some of the things he was doing. I remember being at a meeting with you and Pastor A a while back. Um, so it's just something that hopefully if we can get this board started, the board could apply for grants and receive different funds to help individuals and help those groups that are already doing this in the community. That's it.
And then number three, motion to ward EMS ambulance remount bid to Southeastern Specialty Vehicles at the loss responsive, responsible bidder. And, uh, that is on page 82, uh, where we, you see the bid sheet and bid tabulation. And then county managers report, Board of Commissioners' committee reports. Uh, we do have a closed session today. Board of Commissioners' information. And then again, uh, we do need to leave probably about quarter till 12, uh, to go over to the Maxwell Center uh, for lunch, legislative lunch with, uh, Farm Bureau.
And we can adjourn our meeting over there.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to stress to everyone, let's try to be out of here by about quarter to 12. And then we can re, we can adjourn over there. And, but if we don't get out of here by, by about quarter to 12, we're trying to keep having to come back up here and reconvene the meeting over here.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else, any other commissioners have anything else I need to add? Okay, I declare our bridge in the meeting over. We need to go into closed session. Mr. Parker, do we have time?
I think so, Your Honor. One is to, uh, discuss the location of, uh, business in Wayne County. Another is to consider the purchase of property, real property. And finally, to consult with your attorneys to preserve attorney client privilege.
Okay. We, we need to ask everyone to leave for just a few minutes, sorry for the inconvenience, but we need to go into closed session.